Thanks for tuning in. If you're watching on YouTube, be sure to hit the subscribe button to stay up to date on all our latest video content. If you're watching on local gov TV, be sure to visit their website to see all of the content made for you by your local governments. Alamance County is pleased to present the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting.
Okay, we'll call this June 12th, 2024 Budget Work Session of the Alamance County Board of Commissioners to Order. Invocation and pledge is mine this month, so if you'll join me in prayer. Father God, we have so many deliberations to make, so many issues that we're trying to deal with for the citizens of Alamance County. And we ask that you be in each one of our hearts and each one of our minds to lead, guide, and direct our thoughts and our deeds, our actions and our words, dear Lord, that they'll be acceptable in your sight and that they'll take us where we need to be to get our county straight and run the finances properly for the people of Alamance County. We ask you to bless us, keep us safe and sound, keep the county safe and sound, protect our law enforcement, protect our EMTs, protect all of our employees, dear Lord. We ask all this in the powerful and holy name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. County Manager York.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Happy to kick off our third budget work session today. The agenda just has us moving right into adjustments and proposals from the board. We will try to reflect those on the screen as we go with a running tally for each adjustment. Aside from that, if there are other questions or information that we can provide to you, we'd be happy to do that. We're ready to jump in when you all.
I'll take a moment just to acknowledge the fact that our chairman is out today. He's a little under the weather and we hope to have him back soon. Expect him to be okay. He thinks he'll be able in a couple of days, a day or two at most, so I acknowledge his absence. Andrew York, if you want to proceed.
All right. I think Rebecca Crawford is gonna start us off, reminding us what adjustments we have made so far, and then happy to turn it over to the board. Rebecca, do you want to walk us through that again?
Sure. Yep. So as we discussed on Monday, we have a few staff recommendations that we have already adjusted and proposed as adjustments to the manager's recommended budget. One is on the revenue and expenditure side to increase by $200,000, and that is for fines and forfeiture funding that by state statute goes directly to ABSS. The next would be a grant that the library received as of June 6th, which would also add revenue and expenditure budget of $27,200. And then on the expenditure side only, with a net zero change, we removed $325,000 from the ABSS capital funding for the bleacher repairs after a decision that was made at a previous meeting. And then a staff also identified that there is an economic development grant that is expiring, and so we are able to add $30,000 back into our expenditure budget. Are there any adjustments that you'd like to make? We recommend we use our session today as that time to throw out ideas, have discussion, share information, and that will help us get towards our adoption on the 17th, hopefully with some consensus.
I'll ask, the $200,000 about forms and fines and forfeitures, what is that $200,000 gonna be taken from? Because I know we get that with the courts, all that stuff. Is something, somebody else not going to get that $200,000?
No, this is new money. We've noticed as we were closing out the current fiscal year that each fiscal year, we tend to come back to the board with an amendment at the end of the fiscal year to add that money. Let's go ahead and do it now. We can see that that trend is occurring, and we know that this is only to be able to be used for the schools.
So crime pays.
At least we're benefiting it, being able to put it towards education.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't that change this plus $30,000?
Any other comments?
Utilities. I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me. Pam, did we finish?
No, no, no. Well, I just, I wanted to go back to utilities.
Okay.
Where they were looking at a little over $3 million possibly, because we got all those numbers. Thank God, that's not my guess in Waterville. And we had suggested it go down to, what, 1.2, 1.5, or something like that? What I want to know is when we, with the projections of power's gonna raise everything, we're seeing this across, I saw this morning where inflation has gone up another 3.3%. And I'm just curious if we set that goal at that 1. something million where they were looking at over 3, when it comes and runs out, if it should, where is that extra money coming? Is that gonna come to come out of our fund balance, our general fund, to cover that? If that should go over that, if Mr. Hook has to come back in here?
It would come out of fund balance.
That's a magical box of money, isn't it? Okay. So we want to leave that like that is, and then if they have to come back in here, we have to adjust it.
In the manager's proposed budget, we don't have an increase at all.
Okay.
So I think there was a proposal made at the last meeting to put aside some money for utilities, which would be an increase. Do you have that amount, Rebecca, from last meeting?
We can certainly pull it up.
I think that was Commissioner Turner's suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine, but I'm just curious as to when that happens, and it's more than that, where are we gonna get this money from if we're trying to do a budget as tight as possible and fair to everybody as possible?
So I believe there were a couple different proposals. The latest one I saw was for 1.2 million, which would be a utilities contingency of 20%.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that's what was made in the meeting.
If that's during the meeting.
I think what we talked about was removing the contingencies and going with the flat amount, and if you'll give me a second, I'll try to find that amount.
So that was 2.5 million, 2,553,000.
I just got one more simple messie after she gets there.
Okay, Pam. Are you thinking that?
Is that what you were remembering, Heidi?
I think that's what we were saying, but Commissioner Turner, did you have a different number in?
I think it was 2.5596 something.
That's what we have.
That's an addition?
That would be an addition to the recommended budget. Right, there's no utility increase in there at the moment.
That's correct.
Okay, and just one more thing about the maintenance, maintenance, the HVACs and all that. I was so glad to hear Mr. Hook talk about a real maintenance program, because I mean, we've heard, everybody always runs the maintenance, wants to pick on it. And we are absolutely positive, we don't want to do the amount that they had suggested and drop that down. Because that is, what, 500, 550, to really cover, really overview of the whole school system, their HVACs, their roofs, their, I mean, because they're gonna be running everything full-time now, and things even running full-time with their nuke, and I mean, I have to get, well, I have to get our, you know, our furnace serviced, or we're gonna have problems with it. And that's always been the sore spot of ABSS to the commissioners, and just over the years was the maintenance. And I just want to make sure that it is covered and supervised and checked on so that we don't have another crisis like we've had, or we're not looking at water running through, I mean, it's just treat the school systems, buildings, like we would treat our own home because it has our children in it. And so I just want to make sure that we're not running a sale here, and we just, we're not gonna, I know we gotta look at getting squeaky clean with everything, and we are going to, but I just really want to make sure that we really focus on maintenance, because like I said, that has been a sore spot for a long time. And I'm just glad to hear that they're coming forward with that. That's accountability, big time.
I believe the original request for preventative maintenance was $700,000.
Okay, okay. But yesterday we heard 500 or 550. I got it here in a question.
495,000 was the one for everybody to add a lower amount.
Okay, okay. But they like utilities. We got them if we have to.
Would you like to propose that as an adjustment?
No, I'm not proposing nothing. I'm just asking questions. Because I listened to Craig, I've been on the stick, it's every motion that's probably come out of his mouth, and I believe in that. But this is a real stickler for me. I don't want to cut this short because it has gotten, it's just, it's gotten us on the media. We're famous, and I don't want to be famous for those reasons. I don't want to see mold in this county ever again, it's in my background. So that's all I'm saying.
If I might, Commissioner Thompson, I understand that change to be, that the roof plan doesn't change, but the HVAC plan creates preventative maintenance yearly for each of the schools as opposed to quarterly. Is that essentially the difference?
It reduces some of the quarterly activity. Every piece of equipment will be touched at least yearly. I think that's, it's a good start to what I had said, we're going from 0 to 495,000.
And one other question. Are these your peo, no, don't worry. Are these your people or are these people that we're gonna, we're gonna hire to do this, that are HVAC professionals, that are, this is what they do for a living?
Contracted services from a company that has folks that are certified on the types of equipment we have.
Okay. Just trying to make sure they're covered, no more running out of steam. I'm good.
Would you like to put any of those adjustments up there?
I didn't say nothing about adjustments, I just wanted to know yes or no. I mean, I just really want to make sure that they are covered, because it's like using cheap paint. Don't use cheap paint. Use good paint so you don't have to get back and just patch it all the time.
Without adding any of those in, those are not included in the recommended budget. So I would need-
What's not?
The preventative maintenance contracts and the increase of utilities, those would need to be added up there as an agenda adjustment. I just want to be clear, it's in Greg's request, but it is not in the recommended budget.
Why do we talk about it if we're not gonna do it?
That's, that's what we're-
You know, I mean, that's some sense, like, oh, suddenly we got that.
That's what we're doing to this.
Right, I get that.
So the recommended budget came out before we had this.
Stick it up there, let's see what it looks like.
Okay, thank you, put that up there.
See what the numbers look like.
So I think I'm hearing interest in adding-
2,553,000 for utilities and 495,000 for preventative maintenance?
Yeah, it's gonna get out of control here.
I just, I'm all about the maintenance, because I was told Monday, if they go above their limit with electricity, they can come back in here, and we got this fund balance that we can help them with. It's just very simple for me. It's not for anybody else, because I'm not, we're just all so different. I just want to make sure they're covered, if they have to be covered in a crisis situation like all the other agencies in the county. We're looking at that across the board. We're in that position.
Yes.
Okay.
With the addition of those two things, that would cover them. But you have to add that. Remember when I presented the budget, I said anything more needs to come from more revenue outside of this.
I'm all about that, that maintenance.
Are those numbers reflective of your thoughts, Commissioner?
I just want to make sure that maintenance is covered. This is a first-time thing, and this has been the hot topic for our school system for years. And they need to run like a business when it comes to stuff like that, like the county. We always have our stuff checked on.
I agree, we just need to be cognizant of the fact that everything we add-
I know.
-is gonna impact the tax rate.
I know, I know.
So we can't overlook that fact.
But everything that we don't do affects everything, right?
That's right. If you're thinking about adding something, just remember you're adding to the tax rate. Unless we find a place, someplace else, we can take it out.
I don't think so.
And I, to be perfectly honest, I don't see many places in this budget to do much, if any, cutting. There's some, but not much, and I think we've addressed most of what we think we can cut already, so. Mr. Lashley?
Yes. Since we're talking about things you would like to put in your budget, give me one second here. I think I want to look at the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
I think there was something sent over by Mr. Fortner about taking care of his new hires, so to speak.
Yes, sir.
Can I get you to talk about that a little bit?
Yes, sir.
I think we know what the, what the number is.
I have extra things for you, each one of you. You already, you already have it sent. The only thing that was added is how we're gonna get this done.
Does this have, oh, it does, okay.
Does everything I mailed?
Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. Sheriff Johnson, and I've been on the phone with him more than he's been on vacation this week, so he sends his apologies that he can't be here to address you with whatever questions that you have. Mr. Lashley?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir. What do you want me to do?
I just wanted to, just to make a short presentation of what, what you're asking for and what this document that you gave us, what exactly it all entails.
This entails the shortages that we have at the sheriff's office, including the sworn and detention and our civilians. When I sent it over, we made a proposal to do a $10,000 sign-on bonus for 12 of our employee positions only, $5,000 at the initial date of hire. That's the initial date that the sheriff swires you in. Then after 12 months, if you satisfactorily make your evaluations, you do all your service training, there's no disciplinary action, and you complete the probationary period, the other $5,000 will be handed to you. We would also, once we get to 80% staffed, then this goes away until, for whatever reason, COVID, whatever, whatever other, as Ms. Thompson talked about, tragedy was to happen, we could start back at commissioners' privileges and honors. The things that we talk about, yes, go ahead.
Give me a second. I think we have assumed too that 80% of the staff is 80% of the 70 vacancies, we presume to be 71 vacancies.
Yes, that Ms. Heidi sent to us by email. Thank you very much, Ms. Heidi. She already crunched the numbers. Thank you very much.
We have Rebecca to thank for that.
And the staff, thank you so much for that. I did add in red on the, where we talked about the other counties around us, we checked, they check, they check the websites every day. The ones in red, which is Wake County and Department of Corrections, they raised theirs this morning. It's on the website, they raised their sign-on bonuses this morning. But implements, implements, how are we gonna do this? That's the most important thing, is we're gonna target the recruitments by being onsite and onsite and offsite at job fairs, developing recruitment background team to increase the application services within our own department, train them, get them up to speed on what they need to be looking for so they can go out and do backgrounds, they can go out and do proper interviews, and there's training for that. Also, in the orientation of the new hires, express things internally and more, talking to them about things that go on there. Leadership training and field training, I done talked about that. Employee satisfactional ideas throughout the next fiscal year, evaluate these. Also, evaluate our hiring process to share with other county departments, working with our other county departments here in Alamance County, seeing what their ideas are, talking to them, see how we need to do things better. And to continue working with the management and human resources, provide information and insight in the upcoming market study, working together as a team. I'm just the person that's giving this to you today. My team is sitting right there. After you talked to us Monday, we went back and we sat in a room for four hours, guys and girls. We let them hash it out, and all I said was get out of the weeds, and let's put it to common sense and how we can help our agency as well as other agencies. They came up with this plan. All the honor and the glory, as myself and the sheriff say, it goes to them because they worked hard to be able to do this where it would not have the commissioners have to raise taxes, have to do other stuff. We take our own stuff and do it. So we appreciate the time and effort that you allow us to come up here and talk to you about this. I think it's a great plan. I think it's ideal, it don't hurt nobody, it don't cost nothing. We'll tweak our system, and we'll work with other county departments to help and assist them and get ideas from them also. So I hope that answered your question, Mr. Lashley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I didn't know if the other commissioners had some questions. I just have one comment.
Mr. Turner? Questions, comments?
I'm happy to defer to Mr. Lashley for the moment. Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Turner, I appreciate that. The only thing I really wanted to ask is if we allocate this money to you and you don't use it, can you not say, I'm not saying give it back, but can you at least have it appropriated for this and only this?
Put it in a dedicated line item. Like a separate line for sign-on bonus?
Because I'm just looking, you know, 54 hires, Jackie, how many, how many people have you hired this year already? I mean, because I know your particular department has always been understaffed and having difficulty recruiting people too.
So we have to go by law with sheriff standards, and we have a lot of laws that we have to have that corporate world does not have to have.
Absolutely.
Okay, so you can't have in sheriff standards, you can't have, talking about certain misdemeanors on your record that's still on there, you can't have those things. We have to look at integrity. They have set us on the pedestal, as citizens do of law enforcement, they put you on a higher pedestal than anywhere else. So you're always in the spotlight. They always talk about the bad, they don't ever want to talk about the good, okay? Good only lasts for a few seconds. So what we have to do is be beyond reproach, and that's what we have to do. The sheriff's standards are set high. He looks at the narcotics use, he does not, uh-uh, you've been using drugs and, and we had one that come in, and Ms. Mantryce asked the question, you say you've used drugs, well, when, when did you? This is what it came out to be. Well, what's today? She said, you know, it's like Wednesday, she said, oh, well, last Tuesday. Well, you wash that one away real quick. So another thing, in the past week or so, we had eight, that they went through the eight. Well, automatically, the first four got washed out because of drug use. Or we also have to look at civil stuff like, what is your finances? How do you keep your finances? Sheriff's standards looks at that. They don't want nobody out there that's got, you know, people suing them all the time for money and they can't handle their finances. So those four washed out. So we have four that we kind of stuck with, but out of that four, due to the rigorous hiring process, which we have, which is the background interviews, we'll go out and talk to the public, we talk to where they worked last, all those good things. Then they have the polygraph that they have to take. Then they have to have FMRT or the psychological. And out of the four, break it down, we'll be lucky if we get two, possibly three, out of the four. And we look more, we'll get the two that are actually hiring. And then we hire them on, we take them on, and then you've got the year to get them certified in, with either detention or basic law enforcement. And then there again, whether they wash out of that or not, whether they fail those subjects. So you're looking, and you already see the numbers, you know, we're thinking, talking that within probably the next year and a half, maybe, we'll be up to 80% staff, looking at good employees. We want people that we can retain and stay with us and work for the county. We're not looking for the person that's just chasing the shiny red apple that's out there. We're looking for that dedicated employee that wants to do the job. And we want to train our own people to be able to go out and talk to a friend or be wherever they're at and talk to them, hey, we got an opening, won't you come down here and be able to talk a little bit about it also? That's what we want to do. We want to do the recruiting program as a professional recruiting program that other people might use that model.
Well, the reason I'm asking that question is trying to figure out what the probability, not the possibility, but what's the probability of hiring 49 people this year?
This year, Ben, so we're in the middle of it, sir. Hopefully, we might get 10.
Okay.
So possibility we'll have 10 by the end of the year, may have more than that.
Well, I'm just, just asking because, you know, if, if it's 10, why couldn't allocate 25% of this number? Go ahead and allocate that 25% now, so you've got 10, 10 people in the, in the bag, and like I've told the sheriff countless times, if you get on a hiring spree, please come back.
Yes.
Please come back, because we will allocate the money to you.
Yes.
If I'm not here, I think these folks will do it. So could we do that, Rebecca?
You can certainly pull that number.
I don't know, Mr. Turner has some questions.
Just a clarification on that. Are you talking, Mr. Fortner, are you talking 10 between now and December, or are you talking 10 to the whole fiscal year?
Hopefully, if we get lucky with these four, that'll be four we've already got in the hopper. So if everything goes good, hopefully, maybe, maybe eight to 10? It's, it's hard to say, Mr. Turner, it really is.
Fiscal year or calendar year, I think, is the question.
You said between now and the end of the year.
Well, I'm thinking, okay, fiscal year from July to July of next year. Okay, so I'll clarify that. Possibly, we could get 10, maybe more, depending on our, how we hit a spree and what good people we get coming in. And there again, it's, it's the economy, we got all bad things coming up this year. As we know, we got elections, we got all these other things coming up. So yes, I would say an estimate, if we could get 10 between now and next fiscal year, we might get lucky and get more. And if so, I know the sheriff will come back and let you know that. And that's the reason we want to work closely with county management to let them know, hey, we're doing this, we're doing better, we're doing this, not come in and talk. Communications is what doesn't happen anymore. We need to come and talk and sit down and discuss instead of texting and things of that nature. And that's what we're coming up with, is we want to be able to sit down and talk face to face and see what are the problems is and what we need to do better. We're not perfect, by no means, sir, but we want to try to be. We want to strive to make Alamance County the best. Is, Ms. Thompson, what did you just say a minute ago? You want to be on the news for good things, not always bad.
Amen.
And that's what we want to do. That's what they sat down for four and a half hours and came up with before you got the emails.
Excellent. So Rebecca, can you give me a figure on the 10 that we're speaking of? Go ahead and-
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can share.
Oh, thank you very much. You go ahead.
So if we did 25% of that total amount, this is not the 80% of vacant positions, but all the positions, it would be 106,443.
Okay. Let's stick that on the list.
Okay.
106.
443.
43. Mr. Turner, anything else?
I got, I got one more question, but it's for the school system.
Oh, thank you.
Well, I got, I got a couple of thoughts about this. I've thought about it a lot since Jackie and I first talked about it, and we've had some more conversations about it as well. Honestly, looking at this thing, I don't think it's gonna have a net, a net impact on our budget.
Not really.
I know we look at it and we think it will, but we got 70 positions we're funding, which we're not gonna have filled. So we've got to find, we've got the money going into the budget for 70 positions, correct? These 70 aren't filled right now. If we get 10, there's gonna be lapped salaries that result from that, so we won't have to bu- savings from the over $300,000 we've had.
That's correct, sir.
In overtime.
That is very correct.
So, I, I see the potential here to get, to use this to get it done and it may, may prove to be a, a banner program for us to use with some other difficult to fill positions. Try and come up with a way to fill some slots in DSS, in EMS, if it works. As, as, as the chief's just indicated, you know, he's going to be, he's going to be okay with 10. I mean, I'd like to see 56 on, on the 1st of July, personally.
I would love to, too.
That would be a miracle in my mind. That would be an absolute miracle. I'd love to see it, but I don't see this having an impact on our budget.
I agree. Ms. Thompson?
I want to ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we get random exit interviews that we get mail from us.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I hear from folks who have left.
Yes, ma'am.
They, I'm sure they contact any of us. And my concern is, is the salary's one thing. Everybody needs to get a job they can make a living to pay their bills and enjoy their life. The detention is a whole different ballgame.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I want us to be careful when we're up here talking about, you know, my detention officers have been beat up, I'm afraid they're going to get killed, you know, this is, because it's reality, but at the same time, that can really impress someone, what the heck? You know, am I really cut out to do something like that? I'm certainly not. And I just, I look at, Wake County's budget is 2.08 billion and they have a 7,500 sign-on bonus. Forsyth is 581 million, they have a 5,000. Forsyth's had a hot mess with their jail. I mean, they've had some really difficult times. I've watched their sheriff online. Durham's is 966 million and, and it's, you know, got a $10,000 sign-on bonus. And they also put 230 million into their schools and decreased it this year 20.6 million. And we're, we're not that big, but our problems are big, just like everybody else. You just kind of do the ratios and see how it goes. When I was on the DSS board, I would hear from disgruntled social workers when they left. It's another hard job.
Yes, ma'am.
Like a teacher. It's a calling and you know what you're walking into. Moving counties, you're still working with that same kind of clientele. It's just a different zip code. It's, are you cut out for it or not? And I, I just want to make sure, I used to be concerned about the, how toxic the atmosphere is when you go to do that call because it is very dangerous, very serious. I've seen that Wednesday night of last week. But it can't come back to your office, your home base and be toxic. And when you work with really hard stuff, it can be a really tough atmosphere to stay positive. Because I can't imagine walking around in jail and always looking over not just one shoulder but the other because everybody in there is ticked. They don't want to be there and some even say they don't deserve to be there. No, not by it. But to work in that thing, in that atmosphere, it is very dangerous. And I want any officer that wears the badge to be safe. And, but they also know that it's not always guaranteed like a soldier, like anybody that does this kind of work. And so, I just want to make sure, I mean, I understand all this, I mean, because you have to have incentives. We give them all the time for big industry. We have the supplement for teachers that, and people that have bigger jobs or whatever, whatever it is, what are you going to give me? Life insurance, all kinds of stuff like this. That is a good reason, it's really part of your salary and it's a good reason for you to go work somewhere. The benefits that you're going to get, does it really pay me to work there? Is it worth all the stuff I have to endure? And your individual has to answer that question themselves, but I just, I just want to make sure that we are looking at the real core issue as to why so much of an exodus out of detention. Because not everybody's cut out for that job. It is a rare person that can do that and they are amazing. And, and that's all I'm saying because you'll never make what you deserve in first responders. There ain't enough money in the world to pay you guys. There just isn't. If I had a lamp, I'd rub it and he'd give y'all what you needed. But I'm just saying, I just, in anything we do, there is, there is an issue that we have to really face to make sure that we are dealing with that. It's kind of like pulling a lead, mowing it or rounding it. You got to get rid of that problem. And so, that's, that's all I'm saying because, I mean, these budgets in adjacent counties, they're big, they got bigger numbers, they got, they got a great wood lodge, you got a crabbed ear valve, they got all the stuff that pours into their tax base. You know, I hope we can look at becoming that also ourselves when it comes to that commercial aspect to take the burden off all of us. So, that's it because I'm your biggest fan, you know that, I bake for y'all.
Yes, ma'am, you do.
And I'm just saying, I just want to make sure that we're totally honest with ourselves and if, if there's anything that we can fix to make us better, plus money, I think that's just a bonus, that's a real bonus. Because you go home, I called you when I was in Kentucky about somebody.
Yes, ma'am.
And you picked up the phone and now you, you get to deal with it. But I'm just saying, you never stop.
No, ma'am.
You never stop.
It's 24/7.
Never run the other way. And, and I'm always stand by you, but I just want to be really honest with ourselves. We just have to make sure that we are dealing with the whole, go up in 30,000, look at it, make sure we're not missing anything because I want your staff full and safe and everybody ready to go.
Yes, ma'am, and that's the reason why, if we can get people in, we can relieve people to go home and not have to be, come back on, call in on overtime or have mandatory overtime. We want to be able to get our staff up to where they can have their two or their three days off and they can, they can decompress. And that's, that's what they looked at, was what can we do for the individual to make it better? If we can get to 80%, that would make us wonderful, make us healthy.
Yeah.
In other words, we got to go to the doctor, which you all are the doctors, and we go with what you say, we work and we make it, and we make ourselves better. And that's what we want to do. It's not looking at me, it's looking at us. And the communication part is very important.
Well, and caregivers, first responders are the people who take probably the least amount of care themselves.
Yes.
Because they are selfless. And I know one thing, my son told me after he went through basic training, he said, I learned how to sleep standing up. And I bet Turner over there, Commissioner Thompson over there can say that. But I mean, it's just, it's, it's a rare person that wears that badge. I don't care if you're male or female, Martian, you are the elite and I want you safe, but I want you healthy.
Well, George Strait has a famous song, it's called "The Weight of the Badge." If you listen to the words, it is very true. You don't know when you leave that morning, when you kiss your wife and children goodbye, if you're going to be, come home and hug them. It's, it's a weight of the badge, but it's like the weight of the badge for teachers, for social service, for EMS. There's a weight of the badge there also, just in different circumstances. And we thank you for entertaining this thought. We thank you for looking at it and really looking at it, for my emails and things, and we very much appreciate it. The sheriff is very much appreciative of it. I just got off the phone with him before I came over here. He told me exactly what to say and what to do and I said, well, I appreciate that, I'll have to wing it with a wing in the pride. So, but thank you all and we appreciate it again.
He did almost a good job of saying it exactly like he would have said it probably to the chief, I tell you.
Well, I didn't raise my finger or anything like that.
That's true.
I got one last question, just wanted to ask Jackie since we're there.
Let me finish up on my.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you okay, please?
Thank you.
Like I said, I, I don't really see this having much of an impact, if any, on the budget. Is there a way when we, as, as Commissioner Lashley indicated, that we not only can set aside, but for example, like I said, unless we fund, unless we hired existing certified officers from other agencies and filled all 54 positions on July 1, there's nowhere, we're not going to have anywhere near a $328,000 impact. If it's 106,000 for 25%, which is a little bit more than 10, then we can move monies out of, we can, we can budget for it, but we can move monies out of lapped salaries during the year to cover that. Would that not be correct?
You could use lapped salary to fund this, but it does take some time to incur lapped salary.
Right.
So, they will not have any money at the start of the fiscal year unless you allocate new funding for this. There would be no lapped salary until these positions are vacant for a while. And Rebecca, am I correct that the 70 positions are funded or not funded?
The 70 positions are funded.
These are the funded ones, not the ones that we have taken away for the vacancy rate. Just wanted to be sure.
I, I think there's certainly a way that we could work with the sheriff's department to monitor the budget closely over the fiscal year. And if we are coming to the end of the fiscal year and it looks like the department will go over budget, we can certainly go back to the table and look at that if that is an option that you're.
It would be the same thing if it's not. Come back up to us and we can modify the budget, but I just, I, I, I think this is a great idea. If it, if it fills all the slots of July 1, I would be tickled to death and hope it works.
We believe we'll probably get a lot of transfers.
That's, that's kind of where, that's kind of where our hope is, I think, but.
We're hoping that that will happen.
Well, I hope they're transfers from out of county.
Yes.
No, no, no. Yes, ma'am, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we don't want burnings, folks.
For out of county.
And then we go up again to rob them back, so.
From other, from other detention centers throughout the state. That's what we're hoping for.
Not that we don't want burnings, folks, I'm saying.
But now, we will, but they will be, they will be put under a rigorous, to make sure they're the right person.
I just, I, I just wish somewhere we could find a way to stop this back and forth between all the different agencies because every time somebody goes up, somebody else goes up. Somebody else goes up.
That's true, sir.
It's a cycle going.
So, do we want to set aside or add 100,000 as seed money for this program?
I think that would be a good idea.
Do you want to go with 100,000?
So, as meaning additional budget or an allocation in the existing sheriff's department budget or track it throughout the year without increasing the total budget?
I was thinking that we needed some seed money for the sign-on bonus to start July 1. So, we start with 100,000 and then we can use lapped salary throughout the year as that.
Mr. Lashley had a question, I think.
Oh, yeah, actually, I've got several questions now that you started, you started to make me think about this. When Rebecca said that the 70 positions that you have here are allocated funds, then it goes to your point. These, every month, that number of lapped salaries will start to get larger because there's no one there.
Correct.
So, with that being said, I don't think you're going to need the 106,000.
That's what I said.
I don't think you're going to need it because in a month, you'll probably have $100,000 to do it. But I guess what I'm saying is, is could we go ahead and stipulate that we want $106,443 to go in, as you called it, seed money, to go into this program? And Jackie, all you probably have to wait for is 30 days. And probably by the last day of July, you would have the 106,443.
And it will, it will take that long, sir, to do all the processing and background and things of that nature.
Well, they must do it like that and we don't even have to put it in the sheet. So, but we want to make sure that everyone's under the impression that the seed money is going to be there for you to do this. Just you probably have to wait to have the lapped salary money, probably at the end of July.
So, you're just wanting to use the lapped salary? So, they won't give a sign-on bonus until the end of July?
The only problem I have with that is the ideal situation is we fill 54 positions on July 1. That would be fabulous, but then I think we ought to at least stick.
There's no way that that will happen, I promise you.
I'd like that possibility to happen, but the probability is probably zero.
I'm, I'm going to shoot low and hope for high?
I am, too.
Okay?
I'm trying to.
But I'm going to try to be realistic here. We've already hired eight this year and we got, how many in the hopper?
We have three deputies and we have four detention officers.
So, we have seven people already in the hopper, but that takes a month, that takes a while to get everything done.
And for uncertified new officers, we don't have a BLET program coming online here until September, end of August.
That's true. None of that will happen.
Six months into the year.
If we sponsor somebody, none of that will happen until, I take an oath, that's when that starts. So, that's, that's a long time.
I remember Brian Haged had to tell me what the hopper was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He kept talking the hopper, I thought, what is he talking about? But I'm, not really.
So, Ms. York, are we, are we okay?
Let me just make sure I understand that we are on board with the hiring bonuses and an additional 5,000 at 12 months of service to be funded through lapped salary. 5,000 sign-on and 5,000 at one year. Okay, so, nothing needs to be added up there, it sounds like.
Do we need a motion for that or are we just working with it?
Looking for consensus.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll work for now.
I haven't heard anybody say no, so.
I think that's, yeah, that's.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. I'm glad to see we're digging along these lines. We considered something similar for DSS social workers a year ago, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Opted not to go in that direction because I think the board was more focused on salaries, but the cost of that was, was the prohibitive. My concern is that we still have too hard to fill areas that we're not touching with this plan. Those are paramedics and DSS social workers, meaning APS, health protective services, social workers. I mean, I'm happy to consider something like this for them. I don't know if it's a one-size-fits-all, meaning I don't know if they would prefer something different or not. I would like to get some information about that for Monday to see if that's something that we would do for these groups, too.
What do those vacancy numbers look like?
DSS, health protective services is about 12 and I think paramedics are 7.
So, if you looked at 80% of both of those, you're looking at 20?
And they were hard to fill, right? DSS.
Yes, detention, DSS and EMS were part of the first phase of the market study already.
Now, didn't we, going back maybe a couple of years, didn't we actually vote on bonuses for DSS? And it was, it was negligible in their hiring?
That was, that was two years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, that was two years ago, which did affect our decision about doing that.
Right.
About a year ago.
Absolutely.
They submitted a request for, to someone to bring on additional social workers that included that. We rejected it, talked about salary. Did you guys look, I mean, we can at least talk about salary. Did you guys look at the numbers of, if we wanted to give a boost to salary, maybe instead of this or, or in combination with this for different groups? Do we have numbers of what those are? I mean, we're starting to get higher numbers that might make this difficult in light of the revenues that we've already got established.
Are you asking for the hard-to-fill positions?
Yes.
Or are you asking for vacancies?
Hard-to-fill positions.
Okay.
That if we chose to do, if any of these groups chose to do salary or asked for salary instead of signing them, just wondering what those numbers are.
Okay, so, in the past, we've said we weren't fond of sign-on bonuses because the research shows that that doesn't actually retain employees. They'll leave after a year and you've lost 10 grand. That's what the typical research has shown. So, a lot of places that have started this have moved away from it. It is a good recruitment tool, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they stay. So, I think that was the sentiment of the board last time, is we didn't want to go down this road because there isn't a lot of data to show that this is a long-term solution. In terms of hard-to-fill positions, we have numbers for what those positions are. I've broken those down for detention, I have paramedics, and then we have social workers. I don't have a good sense of exactly what social worker positions I'm including or not. There's some conversations about which of those should fall in this category. And then we have social workers. I don't have a good sense of exactly what social worker positions I'm including or not. There's some conversations about which of those should fall in this category. So my numbers aren't totally firm, but I did run scenarios on a $3,000 increase and a $2,000 increase based on some loose numbers in those departments. So we're talking about 140 detention officer positions, approximately 100 part-time and full-time paramedic positions. And my DSS numbers are still a bit in flux, but if I use the number of 35 social workers, a $3,000 increase would cost a million dollars, just over a million. And a $2,000 increase for each of those positions would cost about 67,000, 400, I'm sorry, 674,190.
Is that 2,000 and 3,000 total or is that 2,000 and 3,000 plus benefits?
It includes FICA retirement, FICA and retirement, yes. It has to be added in because it's considered an earning.
And could you go over the numbers again? You said 144?
I have 140 for detention.
Right.
So that's officers, deputy corporal sergeant lieutenant captain major. I've got 100 for EMS paramedic and part-time paramedic. And then I've got somewhere between, I'm not sure where we've landed on social workers as to whether that includes supervisors or does not. So I'm using a number of 35, which would not include supervisors. And I don't know if that's accurate.
Well, I just want to, just, I'm just, just want, because I couldn't remember the number here. In your recommended, manager's recommended budget for social services, you actually have an increase.
Right. So.
Over last year's.
All of our personnel lines have increased for every single department. And that is because we had the market study last year. So that's a change from year to year. We also have, you know, different factors in there that are, that are causing those increases. Remember, we also had a large retirement.
Absolutely.
Increase from the state. That's factored into that number. And then if we do COLA or merit, that would also cause the personnel lines to increase. So each of those components are reflected in that increase.
Well, I was looking at your recommended budget versus the adopted budget of social services, and it looks like it's about $2 million more than the budget that we adopted last year, what you're recommending here. So why couldn't that, the extra increase you just mentioned what it's about? Okay?
Yep.
They are also a department that has difficulty in hiring and recruiting as well.
Yes.
So once again, we're back to would Commissioner Turner, would, would, would lab salaries catch up with what you were asking? Probably not. Paramedics. Well, the paramedics. Maybe DSS. Uh, the paramedics, I'd like to talk about that as well, but I just wanted to sort of book this away before I started with the paramedics. I'm going to throw them to you as well. Didn't we increase the salaries of our EMS staff?
Yes.
So why are we doing it right after? Once again, why can't they wait a year? And what's, what's, I'm just trying, I'm just asking. I'm not pointing fingers at you, but didn't they just?
Again, the market study increased salaries for detention, paramedic, or EMS and social workers already.
Already.
So we're looking at this again, additional?
Yeah.
I think Commissioner Turner is wanting to do something above and beyond market for the positions that continue to be hard to fill. That would put those salaries above market.
I see what I was, what I was wondering was come up with a plan to fill the positions that, that currently are hard to fill. And so if it's, if those departments and staff thinks we can, we can do that with, with a signing bonus, which I understood this board to be frowned upon, then I'm happy to consider that. I just haven't heard, I think it'd be good to hear from them about, about that. You know, maybe they'd be done today, but we got to remind them.
Other county departments have been told that that was not something the board wanted to explore. So we have steered away from that.
Yeah.
Every year, we, this is what we hear. It's every year. This is, I mean, since I've been here on this. And, and it's, it's the same issues. What kind of turnover are you seeing like from year to year? Is, are social workers kind of hovering around the same amount? They'll hire some, then some will leave. You know, that's, we used to see that in certain departments of the school system. It's just what it is. And we've given these three, like Bill was saying, they went through the salary study because we're looking at all the departments in the county to make sure that we are competitive with what appears to be with us county to county.
Yeah.
I have some concerns if we are doing these salary studies and paying for these salary studies and then we get to this point and it's not turned out like we would hope if it, if it gets raised or it's the parents are being raised, it's out there being raised, and we're adding more to it again. What is the limit for that? I mean, what is it going to take? Because I know other counties are having the same struggles, that a lot of folks are running from these kind of positions. It's just so difficult and the lack of respect. And so, I mean, paramedics, I'm going to tell you, I can, well, they're all amazing. What can you say? They all have their different thing, but they all are tied to each other too. They all feed into each other. So I'm, I'm just curious about.
Vacancy rates.
Yeah.
Well, on Monday, as York pointed out, that we're looking for, exploring an opportunity or options to contract for transport services for EMS. Am I correct?
It's a bit more complicated than that, but we would ask the board at a future meeting to look at the opportunity for convalescent transport to be contracted out or to be franchised.
And that's going to cost. It's going to cost, yeah.
We would lose revenue on that.
What we lose, we have to pay off people who can't afford to pay their bill every year.
That would continue. That would continue. I do have the vacancy rates. I shared that during the manager's budget presentation. And so this was a snapshot in time as of April 30th, when I presented it, the detention center in fiscal year '22, '23 had a 28% vacancy rate, and we saw that drop to a 27%. On EMS, previous year, '22, '23, we were at, we were at a 14%. There's the slide that I used. They're now at a 13%. Sorry, it was there. And then on social services, we've actually seen some, some good strides there. They were at 23% vacancy in fiscal year '22, '23. And as of April 30th, they were at 17%.
The problem though is that the social worker piece is still, because it's not moving at that rate.
I understand. We still think that the market study potentially had some impact on these departments in addressing the vacancy.
Do you specifically have the vacancy rate for the social workers that Commissioner Turner's talking about?
Um, I can get that. I don't have that at the moment, but I can get that calculated.
You know, there's something we need to remember about this too. In the, in, I think it was 2009, we had done, 2008 or 2009, we had done a salary study. And we agreed to fund it. None of us on this board were on that board at the time. And then, I think it was 2008, because then in 2009, we hit a pretty nasty recession. And everybody backed off, concerned about the impact. And that's helped to put us where we are today because we had a plan that was being implemented that would have retained or would have kept our salaries for our employees at a level consistent with the market. And we got way behind the market. We're trying to get back up to the market now. And if we can get back up to the market, maybe we won't get in this position again where we're trying to find money and we're having to hit our citizens to try and find it. And we're coming in with the flow, normal flow of revenues.
We just ain't as big as some of these people.
May I pardon?
I said, we're just not as big as some of these counties that are around us. But we got big issues. I remember my first year before Craig coming after me on DSS, and I asked Angela Cole, how many social workers would give her a really healthy stay, could serve really like she would want to and should. She said about 20, 24. And I asked her how many, this was Child Protective Services. I said, how many you got? She said, four. Now, you think about four over this county. Wonder how that would turn out. We had four deputies for this county, or four paramedics, or four nurses. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's just, none of this goes away. COVID showed that. Boy, what a mess coming out of that with abuse on children. I don't, you've got to have these jobs because when you call 911, no matter how you feel about it, you'll want them there right then. And they are right there.
Got to keep them right there, right?
I will try to get a vacancy rate on social workers. I don't have it here.
That's okay. Last time we looked, can you remember what the number was? Like, just like an estimate? Listen, I'm just thinking.
I have a list here and I just.
No worries.
Need to calculate.
No worries. You're, you're fine. You're fine.
Any more thoughts, Mr. Lashley?
Uh, you want me to keep going with this or are you going to go to the school?
Um, weren't we on the school before?
Well, I just mentioned that with paramedics, we actually gave them a raise and we actually gave them actually what they asked for. And then I remember hearing from that, those, that group, that they wanted to be paid Wake County rates. And I was, I was a little bit taken back by that because we had worked diligently to get them what they asked for and then they raised the bar. And I was not very happy about that, but I'd be willing to listen to them. If you want me to, I only have one last question.
Go ahead.
Uh, I wanted to ask the school system. I see that Ms. Johnson's not here today and I'm disappointed because I asked her a question that she said that she would get back to me at this meeting. And the question was, how much did the school system pay for teacher supplements last year and the previous year? Now, I have some numbers, but I've been told by my finance team that they're not hard numbers, that they can't verify the numbers that I have. So that's why I asked her that question. Like Ms., like Mr. Harrison, I'm not into the gotcha game. I don't play that. I'm all about what do we know and how do we know it? So my question is this, and if she wants to email me, that's more than, I'll be more than happy to receive the email. But the question was very simple. How much did the, your school system pay for teacher supplements the year before and this, this year, right now? I'll send that one call right. Okay.
You also have a question about supplements for teachers that were funded by the county as opposed to.
Well, I don't really.
Or supplements that were funded.
There you go. Let's check it out. And you got Alamance County here. All right. I could probably save Mr. Harrison a phone call. And this is an average. Give me one second. Okay, now I could take this number, $5,864 is what Ms. Thompson just gave me.
I didn't write this book.
That's 23, that's 22.
The last, the conference, yeah.
At least I'll have it last year's and I was curious what, what this year's is. Uh, so I could take, how many teachers do we have in the system? 800, I mean, 985? Is that the last number I saw? See, this is just, but anyway, I have the number that I need. It says we're ranked 22nd. $5,864. And I'm assuming that's an average. So I can probably extrapolate through this, like how many, well, I'm thinking if you had, if you had 1,000 teachers, it would be 5.8 million. Okay. I'm good. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I really do appreciate that.
I got an extra one.
Uh, sure.
Great rating.
If you need to go to sleep.
I think you were, we got a, a voucher that was in. I got them from the.
Okay.
NCACC for us. All have them. And we'll get some new ones in August.
Greg, do you know how, like, like just an estimate of how many teachers are in your system? Because I've seen various numbers. I've seen 985. I've seen a thousand number. Mr. Harrison?
Yep.
Commissioner Thompson just gave me this book that has the 22, 23 numbers for teacher supplement. So how many teachers do you have in your system? And it's like an estimate. Is it around 1,000 teachers?
What's the actual cost? Don't know.
Okay. No worries.
First you're not comfortable.
Just trying to piece, piece something together.
And that.
She's going to text that to me right away and I will ask her that as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. I do appreciate that.
I think that is also just teacher supplements. There are other supplements.
Uh, that's what, let's see, the number that I have is much different than this number.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think you're right. Just, just teachers. And that's what this says and that's just fine. But I know that we paid supplements to assistant principals and principals, and they are the ones that get a higher percentage because, and they also have a higher salary. So I know that this number here, if I had to estimate it and I had to guess and you had a gun to my head, I'd probably say that number is about twice as high. Like, it may not come in at 5864. It may come in, I mean, look, I'm, I'm just taking, I'm just assuming you have 1,000 teachers in your system just to make math easy in my head. Uh, that that would be 5.8, but I could see the assistant principals and the principals come in at 3.2, 3.5. So we could, we could put these numbers together and it's, it's not all that big. I just had, I just had a proposal, a solution to the school system's problem. But I can't say anything until we find out what that teacher supplement number is. Once I find out what that teacher supplement number is, I'll be more than happy to give you my solution to help out your school system. And I do believe that it will. It solves two of your major problems. But I'm good. Commissioner Carter, thank you so much for the time. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Turner? Deep in thought.
He's probably very tired. I've got some, some questions from the school system. I want to sort of set the stage for how I've seen, we've talked in our last couple of meetings about, about where we are on, on specific budget items. We, we talked about the technology piece coming out of the operations budget, 1.4 million going into a capital reserve fund that's funded by the government, 4.0 million either being directed toward facilities, technology or facilities, capital, future, whatever. So that would take, I think, well, talking about a 10.3 request, that would take 1.4 out, but still funded. The utilities contingency, we talked about perhaps taking that out at 1.2 million, uh, using Mr. Hook's revised number of 2.5 million on the, on utilities, knowing that we don't have a year's worth of utility costs at a projected rate of utility use, to know exactly what that number would be, but, but also being willing to share information as we go during the year with actual utilities numbers, working with that with the county. And the idea that if, if we were off on that estimate, then you could come back at some point in the year and adjust it. The new number for the virtual schools, we talked about yesterday, which I think was about 247,000. We talked about if you don't hire all of the teacher vacancies that you have, then you're going to have some separate numbers that you don't have to pay out. I estimated that at $50,000 based on not hiring 40 teachers out of the 240 that you could hire. So I'm counting on $50,000 there. Maintenance, which we had talked about, but that was just my number. The maintenance request, Mr. Hook's 1.4 million. We talked about reducing the HVAC preventative maintenance number to 345,000. We talked about the fact that if you have that maintenance preventative maintenance piece for loosening HVAC, you could cut back on free people that you wouldn't have to pay. And that's difficult to hire anyway, which I put a number of $180,000. I don't see a reasonable level. If you have any thoughts on that. And you also have, you requested in your maintenance budget for your maintenance contracts, more money than last year, but that's not an increase of what you would spend in your maintenance service contracts. It is what you actually spend. You didn't budget for it enough last year and this is the difference. That includes a $375,000 contingency, which I reduced to $100,000. And with all of that in mind, with all of those cuts, which I think is comprehensive in my mind, I came up with a 6.8 million number, down from 10.3, which as I look at it, allows you to have, basically, as I understand it, the same services, the same service rates that you would have last year. So all of that leads to, we have double check, oh, it also adds the $200,000 that you would get that we want to dispay again. So that comes to 2.8, 6.8. My question then, I don't know if you're prepared to answer it today, is if you assume about a 7.0 increase, am I correct that that maintains about your same service level as you have this year? What happens to those service levels if the number is, is not 7 or 3.5? What happens to those service levels if the number's not 3.5, but essentially manager's recommending it to zero? How does that affect what you do? How does that affect kids? How does that affect the year? What do you lose from 7 to 3.5 and 0? What does that look like for the district? Again, you may not be able to answer that today, but I think that's something that we need to consider, which is not just putting stuff on the schiep, but understanding how that impacts the district.
We. We would simply have to take those items that were asked for, if it goes down to 3.5, and cut it in half. That means. That means with the maintenance, with services that we provide, and then just everything we asked that goes down to zero, just take that off the table. Just say that's not going to be happening.
Dr. Harrison, can you please come up to the mic?
Without having the line items in front of us, it would simply be everything that we were asking for in terms of any type of service agreement, any type of care work, any type of maintenance work. We just have to cut that out, cut it in half. And that means it, dollars to provide that would run out midway through the year. If we cut that to zero, we would simply just do without those things and would not allow us to even come close to catching up. We, you know, as I told you before, and I don't want to repeat these things to bore you, that we work really hard to keep this number as low as we can and get in a position that we can operate next year and not be facing some of the issues we faced the last couple of years, particularly what we faced this year. And it's simply, in a sense, we were playing with monopoly money the last three years, and the game's been taken away from us. And we, there's nowhere that I can find to cut. 90% of our budget is people. You know the number of people we cut. That's what those 7.5 million, all of that was people, was it not? Craig, did we, did we cut any programs?
Since you've been here, it's all people.
And people's the core of our business. Can you offer any greater specificity than that very general response that I gave?
Yes, I'll try.
While he's walking up there, Dr. Harrison, I'm hearing you're cutting positions. I know a lot of those student services. Were there people cut their jobs, because I hear there are, or were they positions that weren't filled? Because we all know the importance of these student services.
This, most of the student services positions, council or social workers, nurses, were positioned vacancies.
Okay.
And we handled some of those by combining positions. So what you might have heard is I had one school, next year I have two schools. We, the only financial impact on any employed people were months of employment. We had some school, high school counselors. We had one 12-month counselor at each school. We pushed that back to 10.5. We provided some money because there is work that needs to get done at the high school in the summer, but rather than making that a 12-month employee, we can do it more efficiently by paying for services. The school instructional support positions, they all went back to classroom teachers. They were 10 and 1/2 months, so they're now 10 months. Their salary, monthly salary, daily salary is the same. So someone may have said, I've lost my SIS job. Yes, they did, but they didn't lose their job. Their contract as a teacher, their contract is being honored except the months of employment. Graduation coaches, same thing. No more graduation coaches, but they're back in the classroom.
So that...
So I don't think we sent, we cut seven halftime guidance secretaries at our middle schools. We didn't have any other halftime positions or enough halftime positions. A couple of those people took full-time positions, a couple of those people didn't want to work full-time, so they went home. I mean, I know we had one retiree, and then she had no interest in working full-time, so she went home. So they could say they lost their jobs, but...
So the graduation coaches that have just switched what they're going to be doing as far as in classroom, that service, who takes that on with pulling these kids across and doing that extra? I mean, who's going to take that job on? Is that going to fall on the teacher? The, say, the math teacher, the social studies teacher? Is that a guidance counselor role, social worker role?
Yeah, you know, we all have responsibility for all the kids we serve.
I know.
And we, you guys are making decisions based on the resources you have. We'll make decisions based on the resources we have. We're working now on putting in a system of support. How do we make, and those SIS, the school instructional support positions, they did different things at each of their schools. We didn't, we had kind of a general responsibilities for them, but different principals used them different ways. We have support that we have to provide for exceptional children. We have what we call a multi-tiered system of support. Oh, see, that's the Fayetteville National Anthem. The, I should not do that when I'm talking because that loses my train of thought. Multi-system, multi-tiered system of support that when a student is struggling, everybody gets tier one. That's in a regular classroom. Tier two is a little extra help. Tier three is a little more directed help. So the SISs have been providing that type of support in some schools. Other schools, they had other people doing it. So it's simply a matter of us collectively figuring out how we can provide those levels of support. And I think, I may have told the board that when we started this process and we started cutting, in my mind, those SISs were untouchable. So they were a sacred cow. We're not going to take those away. And we didn't take them away until, I think, the last day.
One of every role of every whatever works in the school system has a profound effect on the child, and I don't, nothing to take away from the child.
I have a question, Dr. Harrison. Could you get us a number for how many of the positions you've cut were funded from COVID money sources, ESER, whatever? When we came into that role where we were getting all this federal, those federal dollars, and one of the things this board at the time said was, please be cognizant of the fact that if you use those funds to hire positions that you'd like to have, we may not be able to come in and sustain that after it all goes away, because it is going to go away, and it did, and has, or it will.
We, when I made the reference to monopoly money...
Well, that's pretty much what it was, wasn't it?
Well, '21, '22, we filled our holes with fund balance, $3.5 million of fund balance. When you do that, you either find additional revenue for '22, '23, or you make $3.5 million worth of cuts for '22, '23. We didn't either. So again, three and a half million dollar hole, covered it with fund balance going into '23, '24 this year. We have no fund balance, but we have ESER money. And I think maybe in my presentation, I can't remember, I know I shared with the board, that we did make some cuts back in May of last year coming into this year, but as we really looked into that, those cuts were positions that were being funded with ESER money, right? So that didn't really help our fiscal situation with the county and with the state. When we cut those positions, many of those were positions that would fall into the category that ESER refers to as learning loss positions. You have to fund 20% of your available learning loss, excuse me, 20% of your available ESER funds for learning loss to free up the other money. Okay? When we cut those positions, we didn't save any county or state money, but we also didn't meet our 20% threshold. Okay? So mid-March, late March, we realized we didn't make the 20% threshold. We had a couple million dollars sitting in ESER money that we couldn't access because of that. So we went about taking positions that we had, some local positions, some state positions that would fall in the category of learning loss, and shifted them to ESER. Met our learning loss requirement, freed up this other money, and we used that ESER money to fill the hole that fund balance filled in '22, '23, and '21, '22. That gets us to here. And building our budget going into next year to cover all that's, that I just talked about, we cut 7.5 million dollars, the two years. And so that's what makes it difficult, Mr. Carter, to say that these positions were funded out of ESER money, because I don't think that we took any of the ESER money and said, we have ESER money, let's go ahead and employ a graduation coach. Let's go and employ an SIS coach. I think most of what went to ESER were positions that were already in existence, and we moved them over there. So like our SISs, since I've been using those, we're paying some of those out of state, we're paying some of those out of local, and we're paying some of those out of ESER. Anybody who falls in the teacher category, we get actual salary from the state. From you guys, we get a dollar amount, and we, so if we hire a locally paid teacher, it's money that's with you. So we take all the locally paid people, and I don't think we were doing this, we've done it the last couple of months, and shift them to state money. So if we've got a $70,000 teacher and we have a $40,000 teacher, we need to make sure we put the $70,000 teacher on the state salary schedule, because I'll get $70,000 for them. And we put the $40,000 on the local budget, because we get, we take that out of the pool that you provided us. If we do it vice versa, you know, it's almost, it almost gives us a, well, it does give us, if we're using that 70, 40, it gives us an additional teacher every three teachers. And so that's why, that's a really difficult question to respond to. Again, I think we've, you know, with this budget that we presented, with those cuts, with the requests that we've made, that will get us back to, we're not going to need fund balance at the end of next year, in the middle of next year. We're not going to need ESER. And a lot of school districts are in this shape because of ESER. And when you, when you're a, when you're an organization that is 90% people, and you get a pot of money as big as the ESER money is, it's real hard not to go into people. Now, what you need to do is need to make sure that those people know, and that, and we know, and however we use those people, that it's going to be gone in two years. And we knew it was going to be gone in September of '24.
Well, I think over the last 12 months, I don't think there's anybody on this board that doesn't support education. And I mean, you've got three, three members of this board whose wives are either retired educators or whose wife is currently in education. We all support education. I think the biggest problem we've had this past year, and the problem that ABSS has, and it's not your fault, is a public image problem. It's really difficult for us to sit here with people telling us, don't give me any more money, and y'all come and ask for 10, over $10 million more, and march a bunch of people in here that say, give them everything they asked for. What we hear on the street, different. So it's a tough act, and one of the things that makes it tough as well is when we get a budget where you've got a 10% plug and a 20% plug, and it's taking you to a bigger number than, you know, zero-based budgeting is what the county tries to use. We take every line item and look at it and try to justify it using any kind. Am I correct? And in business, in banking, when I did my budgets, that's the same way we looked at it. If I was going to look at incentives for my employees, whatever the line item might be, how much did we spend last year? What do we think we're going to spend this year? And there weren't a lot of fudge factors. Nobody wanted to give me more than I thought I was going to spend. And in business, you don't get more than you think you're going to spend. And then you're lucky if you get more in revenue than you've got the last year that will support more profits. But we're taking, having to take a hard look at this budget, as you can understand from the comments that have been made here today. It's not a free-for-all. The money's coming out of the pockets of our citizens. And if we go, and we're already looking at about, at the manager's recommended budget, two cents, am I correct?
A two cent increase.
Yeah, two cent increase in the property tax. If you take $10 million, you're looking at another four cents. So this is a tough call. This is really tough to look at. We've got to get a right number. Our, part of our, part of our responsibility is to pay for the bills of the county. Got to make sure that there's enough money out there to pay for utilities, water, gas, gas for buses, gas for law enforcement, whatever the need is. We've got to be able to pay it. But we can't pay more than we need, because every time we put more money in here than we need, we're taking money out of our citizens' pockets.
I don't believe we're putting more money than we need in here. We put a couple of contingencies, and those are areas where we've gone over. We are, we've tried to build in some line items for costs that we've had in the past that we didn't budget for, so that's part of it.
Right.
And that's probably part of what we use the fund balance on, Mr. Carter. You know, we're at a point that, and I've been involved in zero-based budgeting before, didn't have time to zero-based budget from March to June 14th, and plus, we were in a, in a crisis situation. It's not the same as it is in business, though I understand a principle applies and a principle is the same, but there are so many things that are dictated for us, and again, with the funds coming from a variety of sources. I would, can't speak for the board, but I think we would be willing to sit down after this budget process and talk about working together on a zero-based budget. I think we would also be interested in talking about coming up with some type of funding formula that we could work together that would be fair to the school system and fair to the county commissioners. We did that, and then again, so much a crime for a superintendent to stand up and talk about what he did somewhere else. But we had a real tough year, one year in Cumberland, and we were on the verge of a lawsuit. And county manager and I talked with the county financier officer and our finance officer, and said, let's, the four of us meet. And we came up with a figure that we thought we could live with and said we would get together and create a formula. And so the next year, we got through that budget process, we created the formula. I was there for two years with that formula. I left, it was a four-year agreement, two years after I left, and they repped on it. So we had a formula in that school system that was used for eight years, and this never happened. My last two years there, I didn't stand in front of you guys, I didn't say thank you. And so what I'm asking you to do is take a leap of faith in this team. Our team that we have in place right now is as solid a team as I've worked with. This guy, you, I've watched him present to you. I've watched him answer every question that you have. He knows what he's doing. I worked with him for four years as a principal. His integrity is beyond reproach. Revanda knows curriculum inside and out. I've got the numbers, and I'll get them. I've got the numbers, and I'll get to you in a minute. She's our chief academic officer, but she's also serving as our chief finance officer right now, so in addition to getting that information, and she was in the middle of things today, working with the guy who was with us, she said, "Let me run downstairs, and I'll get that to you." She's great and doing good work. Our student support services, Dr. Davis, I hired her when I was here before as an exceptional children's director. She went to High Point University to teach, came back in this position, she's as good as they come. Yolanda Anderson, I hired her as a principal when I was here before, she went off, worked in another school system, she's back doing our human resources. And we've got a communications person now that has worked with many of you folks, has made connections with the community, we're hiring a new one that knows this community, has been involved in this community, and will be willing to work with you. And I changed the name of that position from PIO to Communications Officer, because it needs to be about more than us getting information out. It needs to be more about us communicating. And, you know, we've, this board was pretty clear to me about what they expected me and wanted me to do and hoped I could do in six months, and I think we've made some strides in some of those areas. We're still working as hard as we can work, and I think I owe it to them, to you, to my colleagues, and to the kids, to get us on solid ground when that new superintendent comes in. And this is what it's going to take, what I'm asking for is what it's going to take to get us there. And we set a target that we did not want to ask you for any more than that target. That target was a whole lot less than $10 million. And every time it bumped up, what more can we do? What more can we do? I think the fact that we've worked together over the last two weeks, and you guys asked us some questions, you guys came up with some solutions, I mean, I was talking with our finance, former finance officer, because he's working with us today, and he couldn't understand why that technology stuff was not in capital all along. And I didn't remember, but that's where it was in Cumberland, that's where it is in other places. So, you know, you guys brought that to our attention, I should have caught it. Greg was new to the business, and he wouldn't have thought about it. That's all, that's the way it's been. But that's also illustrative of the fact that when we talk together, not at one another, we talk with one another, we want the same thing. I'm not a taxpayer now, I was for four years in Alaman. I don't like writing that check every year, and so I want to keep that down as well. But I'm willing to write that, and I can't speak for anybody else and their money, I'm willing to write that check. I'm not happy, but it doesn't hurt me when I know what it's going for. And, you know, public education is a, I think it drives economic development. Why do houses cost a lot more in Chapel Hill than New Orleans County? Parents want their kids to go to Chapel Hill car market schools. And I was superintendent in New Orleans County, I'll tell you that New Orleans County schools are just as good as Chapel Hill. But sometimes what we, how we measure schools are ways that don't really indicate or reflect what they truly are. So, you know, I think we want, we want this economy to continue to grow. I think that we talked a little bit about choice when I was here last time. I'm a believer in choice, I believe the best choice is the traditional public schools. But we need to be able to demonstrate to our parents that we are the choice. You know, I look at a couple of programs, we have a couple of programs we've cut. I guarantee you, without dual language, we'd be losing more students.
Yep.
And so we need to continue to work to find ways to convince parents that we are the place for their kids. And again, I think we do that through us working together, and I think we do that with a communications person rather than a public information person. We get the information out. You don't want a speech or any preaching, but that's what you get when you ask, you learn that in superintendent school. You give them a long answer, they won't ask you any more questions.
I think Mr. Fook was going to answer.
He was. So I did all that without getting to the question.
Well, as to your comment about, as to your comment about education in the community, I was just in a meeting over in Gilbert County this morning, where the head of the Airport Authority for PTI made a presentation to us, and one of their top, one of the top key factors in recruiting new industry in Gilbert County, same issue, education and quality of education. So those failing schools have got to be brought up. We've got to do that. I think that was the name.
So we have your staff's number on the supplements, if we want to pivot to that. Was there something else we needed, Mr. Haidner, or are we ready to move on?
Well, it was the, what do you specifically, if you assume 7 million, if you assume 3.5, if you assume zero.
Okay.
I think that's specific enough.
I'm not certain what those numbers mean, the 7 million. I wanted to speak about some of the numbers I presented, and I think it probably would clarify and get to possibly the answer. The prior slide that you had up that shows the, kind of the light items that you all have discussed already, the things I spoke about here in the last meeting, I spoke about utilities, technology, and maintenance. Utilities, I had a number, and I had built in a contingency number, but that's on the board, and I think that's adequate, because we discussed how to come back and get more. So that's utilities. Technology, I presented, and I presented a number of 1.4, and I had a breakdown, and you all have said there's a means to fund that. It's not on the board, I don't know if it needs to be on this board, or if that means that you described, Mr. Turner keeps it off this board, to fund the technology in the capital plan. And then the third item that I had was maintenance, 1.4. 700 of that, 700,000 of that 1.4 was for preventative maintenance, and we've discussed in the prior meeting and a little here today, how the 700 could be reduced to 495, and I think that's acceptable, because I just said that's going, we're going from 0 to 495,000 for preventive maintenance. I think that's acceptable. So of the 1.4 million that I described for technology in the prior meeting, the other 700,000 was straight from the maintenance budget, which included the service contracts, which you've spoken about. So I mentioned in that meeting that in prior years, the school system has funded 1.8 million for service contracts, and it just wasn't a realistic number. And in that process, I described other items in that sheet that we had on the board. For instance, maintenance materials, the dollar value was up in the next year. Gasoline for our vehicles was up in the next year. There was one light item for equipment rentals that wasn't even funded. So, but you asked me, what are we getting? And I said, in the end, nothing, it's all inflationary. So there's only, there's only 700,000 left that I think's not on the board or in discussion, and that is the maintenance items that includes the service contracts. You mentioned reducing the 375,000 down to 100,000 for contingency in the service contracts. So that's, is that 275? Is that, that's how much the reduction is? But in theory, in theory, yes. And then if you are implying that we reduce the HVAC positions that are not filled and take them off the board at 180, from that 700,000, taking out the 375 and the 180, that just leaves 245 that we're, that I'm asking, that I would be asking for if we were to go along with those ideas, which I think are fine. But at that same time, I gave the example of the inflation in '21, year-over-year was 4.7, '22 was 8%, and in '23 is 4.1. And if you took a basket of goods that you bought in 2020, and then you tried to purchase it again at the end of '23 or at the beginning of '24, it would be $17 more. We have 100,000, $100 baskets in the maintenance budget. Maintenance budget's a little over $10 million. That's 100,000, $100 baskets. So in theory, if we just went with inflation on that budget, that's 1.7 million dollars that I'm not asking for.
I've asked, I just texted Ms. Johnson back for clarification. We have 1692 FTE full-time equivalent teachers.
Say that again, 1692?
Full-time equivalent, yes. Some of those are part-time combined. And I think the other figures that were in our, I think this is what you're getting at with the question about the supplements, was 1.4, that million was for the supplements. It was state mandated legislative. We didn't, that 3%, and I guess, you look for clarification of how do we come up with that figure based on that 3% that the General Assembly's requiring us to do. And then the other piece that I always like to point out with regards to the piece in there that goes to charter schools, it's a total of about 1.6, that it's really just passing money to us, even though it shows as part of that budget. I think that's, and Ms. York has put up the supplement, Ms. Johnson emailed it to her as well as me. Glad it came through.
Yeah, me too.
And that's on the screen.
Well, you want to tell me what it is? Because I can't see anything.
Yeah, I also emailed it to you, if you have your email tool.
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. I shouldn't take that.
So it looks like the teacher supplement for '23, '24 is 11.5 million?
Yeah.
And then there's a building admin supplement?
Yeah. So that's exactly, I mean, I'm not a rocket scientist, and I don't know a whole lot about math, but I know that, my number was $11 million. And I was guessing, I was just taking things and extrapolating.
Yeah.
I guess, Dr. Harrison, the only thing, so 11 point, let's try to make math, 11.6 million. Well, I just want to go back to the figure you just gave me. You have full-time teachers, 1692. But that does not include your principals or your assistant principals?
No.
Correct.
Can we make an estimate on how many principals and assistant principals we have?
No, we have 38 principals.
Yep.
We have two principals in our high schools, that's 14. We have one assistant principal in our middle schools, that's 21 total. We have, all of our elementary schools have an assistant principal, with the exception of four of them that share two. How many elementary schools do we have, Greg?
Oh, we have 20 elementaries, so we have, there'd be 18.
So that would be 18. So whatever those first two numbers I had, plus 18. Then we have central services, administrative supplements, and they would primarily be our specialists, I believe, that are paid on a teacher salary schedule.
1,778. So what's this big idea?
Staking outside the box, Thomas, and that's how you solve problems.
That's what I'm counting on.
And that's how you fix things. You know, there's an old saying, you know, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result?
Yeah.
So that's why I'm thinking like this, and that's why I'm looking at this cash. But, because I think it will solve this problem. It's not going to be, people are not going to jump out in the streets and shake my hand and thank you so much for doing this, because it's a, it's a hard decision, and it's certainly not something that you hear from most people that are in county government. But I'll serve it up there, since Thomas is so, so enamored with it all.
He's not part of my presentation.
He's not. Try to stay away from him if you can. This is my idea, and I'm looking at 11.6 million dollar number, and if you get your 1.4, that will be $13 million if you were to get the 1.4. Correct? If you were to get 1.4 of 11.6, you're going to have $13 million. You just told us that you have a hole in your budget, a hole in your system of roughly seven, well, it's a moving number between 6.8 and 7.5. Well, here it is. I suggest that you take the, we're going to stay away from the 13 number, I'm just saying, if you were to get 1.4, your teacher supplement would be 13 million. But we're going to, we're going to add, we're going to look at the 11.6 number. If you were to take the number that you're in the hole, sir, and subtract it from that teacher supplement, it gets the school system on solid ground, it gets you back to zero, where you ask, where you'd like to be. It would get you back there. So let's just say that your number is $7 million to get you back to where you need to be. You could take 11, that 11.6, you could take $7 million at, and get the school system on solid footing, and then give the balance to the teachers as a teacher supplement this year. Now, I know that's not going to be something that everyone's willing to go and do, but it would answer your question, and it would also do another thing. It would also make people who were a part of the school system, the teachers that come up in front of us always asking for money, they would realize one thing. They would realize that there are repercussions to the school board's votes, that when they start doing things, that the teachers don't think there's any downside to that. But this would show them, yes, there is a downside. When the school board gives $19 million away in salaries, that, you know something, we better hold on a second, because that may actually impact us. So that's my big idea. If you take that money that you need out of the teacher supplement, give them the balance, not like they're not going to get anything, but I think it would show the teachers that when the school board makes decisions, that that could adversely affect me. And maybe they would pay attention, and you wouldn't have so many Kool-Aid drinkers coming in front of me, always asking for more money. Because we know what happened with $19 million, sir, and anyone in this room can tell me that if that decision was not made on that day, you would not have the situation in your school system that you have today. That's $19 million, and it seems like it always keeps coming up. So that's my big idea. I know it's not popular, but it will solve your problem, sir. You don't have to respond.
We've hurt teachers enough this year.
Amen.
I've hurt teachers enough this year. I think, you know, we just heard from the Sheriff's Department and the challenges that they have with personnel. We share the same. We talked last time I was here about the number of vacancies that we have. People can make some choices. I think when I talked with you last week, Mr. Lashley, I told you, my gripe is with the state more so than with the county commissioners.
I can see that.
I don't think the state is doing what they're constitutionally obligated to do. I think I told you, I was superintendent of Hope County when that Leandro lawsuit was filed, and the Supreme Court ruled on that, and the General Assembly is ignoring it and appealing it. And so, you know, there are just so many areas where, over the last 30 years, since I became a superintendent, that I've seen the state cut. When I first became a superintendent in 1991, the state paid for utilities, scratched $2.5 million off right there. But they quit doing that. State used to pay for custodians, clerical personnel, a couple of other areas. They stopped doing that. And this is not a partisan issue, because this has happened over the 25, 30 years, when we've had all different kinds of people in the General Assembly. So don't think I'm sitting up here bashing the people of the last 10 years. I'm sitting up here saying, for the last 20 years, we've been heading down a path that I've not felt really comfortable with. We've had a couple of starts and stops, and, you know, there's a reason that we can't get people to go into teaching. And... And we can talk about technology all day long, we can talk about facilities all day long, we can, and that's not what makes the difference, it's the teacher that makes the difference in the classroom every day. And we can get by with an old guy standing up here trying to pretend to be a superintendent, but we can't get by with weak people teaching our kids. And so at the end of the day, it comes down to confident, caring teachers, and everything that we do is to support them. And I've spent my career trying to honor, respect, and value teachers, and let them know that. I don't think anyone has had any Kool-Aid to drink when they come up here advocating for the budget. I regret that at the one meeting, when everybody was up here, kind of getting on you guys when you hadn't gotten on that budget yet, and their gripes were with me and what I presented. So I apologize that you guys got hit for something that Bill did. Bill made all those cuts. And, you know, I've not said a word, asked anybody to come out here. I've had some folks ask me what they could do, and do you want to stick with a group of people together? I said, no, that'll cause more animosity. I said, if you want to do something individually, talk with those that you know, and talk about what that's about. So I think, you know, I sit next to our chairman at our board meetings, and hear people say stuff that's unfair and is not true, and it hurts my feelings. I get a little bit angry, so they don't know the facts. But that's part of public service, and, you know, it's kind of what we signed up for in a way. I mean, I don't think we, I don't think we realized what it was going to be when we signed up. But, you know, and so I, my job is to protect and support teachers, and I'm not going to stand up here ever and say that I would be at all okay with doing what you recommend. And I respectfully, listen, I respect your efforts to solve my problem, my issue, but that's not going to be a solution that Bill's going to have anything to do with, that this bill's going to have anything to do with. I understand, it's not going to be popular. Because, sir, there's certain things you don't, you don't hear in the school system.
I know.
But I do.
Yep.
And people are outraged at our school scores. Outraged. And they say, what company would allow this to happen, and you give them more money? You, over and over and over again, they get the benefit of the doubt when the school scores continue to go down. That's all they're saying.
Yeah.
And they look at it in their real job, that if they did that in their real job, one or two things would happen to them. They certainly wouldn't get a bonus, but they'd probably get fired. That's what people in the regular world are looking at your system, looking at the scores, and looking at the money that goes to it each and every year. That's all they're saying.
Yeah.
And it's a logical response.
It is.
It's a logical response, because there is a real world out there that works in a different manner than Central Office does. That's all I'm saying. I'm just thinking outside the box, I'm just telling you, I'm trying to solve your problem using real world glasses. And I know that it's not going to be popular at, with your organization.
Yeah. And I, you know, over the years, I've heard that argument used both ways. And again, I, I'm a data person, I'm a results oriented. I think if you go track the systems in which I've worked over the years, student outcomes were better when I left than they were when I got there. And that year we adopted the, the budget formula after our battle, we actually went to mediation, that's how far down the line we were. And in mediation, one of the commissioners brought out some data, that he compared Cumberland County with, I think it was Forsyth County, or some other counties, similar counties, and said, you know, in the area of health, area of social services, this area, this area, we're not doing as well as those other counties. We're doing better in education than those counties, so we don't need to fund you as much. So his notion was, we were doing well, we didn't need to, to fund. And I understand the accountability for the funding we get.
Dr. Harrison, I need to interrupt.
Absolutely.
I've just learned that Commissioner Turner's going to need to leave, and we need to make some decisions before he has to leave. We're not going to, we're not going to be wrapped up today. Chair Paisley, feels like he'll be available Friday with his, with his bug he has. We need to look at what we can do on the next meeting, and I need Commissioner Turner's input on that. I think we're going to have to have another meeting between now and Monday night. The two options look like possibly Friday at 2:00 or Monday at 2:00. And I'm just curious to see if either one of those two works well with either, with the rest of you.
I can do Friday at 2:00.
May I?
I can do Friday.
Friday at 2:00?
Monday. Monday, we have a meeting Monday night.
Right, we have a meeting Monday night.
Yeah, we've got a meeting Monday night, so we would do a 2:00 meeting, break at 4:00, get dinner, and come back for 5, about 6:30.
I'm not going to be available Monday afternoon.
Okay, Mr. Thomas.
But y'all can do, y'all can have a meeting, y'all don't need me here.
Friday 2:00 or Monday 2:00? Does either one of those work for you?
Monday 2:00 will work for me, but if I have to change Friday, what I'm supposed to go do, I can.
Okay.
Are you ready to vote on the budget?
I'm not.
I'm not either.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Yeah, I don't feel like we're there yet, so.
Friday, I would prefer Friday at 2:00.
Friday at 2:00?
Okay. Another time Friday, if that would help anybody.
May I?
Would another time on Friday help?
Let's try 2:00 AM.
I can handle that, sometimes I'm up at 2:00 AM.
I have meals on the way.
Every, I look at my hair, sometimes I'm up at 2:00 AM, right?
So I got 10 to 12 meals on the way, so.
May I?
I have meals on the way, it's 10, probably till 12. Don't know how much I talk to everybody that I take to their stuff, so.
We all know that'll take a few minutes, right, Pam?
Yeah, so anytime after 12, like 1:00 on Friday, or anything on Monday.
Okay, so the consensus seems to be afternoon on Friday.
Okay, what time?
2:00.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can wrap this stuff up in two hours on Friday afternoon.
So we would just continue this meeting today, we would not adjourn?
May I?
Right.
Correct, yes.
So we would just need you to continue this meeting and not adjourn?
Right.
Because we haven't noticed.
Recede this meeting until Friday at 2:00.
You got it.
Do we want to give Dr. Harrison a few minutes to finish his comments? Mr. Turner, I know you got to take off.
I have to leave.
Okay.
But I will watch the video of Dr. Harrison.
Okay.
I'll just say one last thing before you go. That's the nicest I've ever been told to shut up. Yeah, I, when I went to Hope County, we were one of the five lowest achieving school systems in the state. They gave us $150,000 for two years. We used that $150,000, and after two years, we were out of that category. They took the money away from us. I left after three and a half years, but in four years, we were back where we were because we used those resources well. I'm just saying that, just step forward, we're going to use your money well.
Well, we, we, I think we've come up with some solutions today to a couple of issues we've been dealing with, we're looking at some possible other solutions for other departments. I think if we work together, we can come up with a solution, it's just a matter of getting our heads together and figuring out what, what works.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Before you leave, Rebecca, I know that he's got to go, but I'm just going to ask you, I want to talk to you afterwards about this sheet right here.
Absolutely. And then Commissioner Turner, would you like us to document the 6.8 million dollar addition that you referenced earlier in the meeting?
What do you mean?
Add it to the list.
I think it's just in our minds.
Got it.
Okay.
All right.
Got you.
Run. Okay. We are not adjourned, we are recessed until 2:00?
Before you says, if, if they don't, if it's just in their minds, can I request that it's put on the paper, just to see what it would do? The six, what you're talking about?
Sure.
Sure.
And that's just, that's all in pencil.
Yep. That was a recent, that's exactly.
We are recessed until 2:00 PM Friday afternoon, June the 14th, is that correct?
Flat day. Thank you, everyone.
Flat day.
Thank you for watching the Alamanz County Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner meetings typically occur on the first and third Monday of each month in the Commissioners' chambers at the County Office Building at 124 West Elm Street in Graham. The first Monday meeting begins at 9:30 AM, and the third Monday meeting begins at 6:30 PM. Changes to the meeting schedule will be posted on the county website at www.alamanz-nc.com. The video of this meeting will be broadcast on Local Gov TV. Please go to www.localsgovtvnc.com for more information about their schedule and to see more videos produced by your local governments. You can also access this meeting through our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/AlemanzCountyNC or by clicking the YouTube link on the county website. Technical questions regarding this meeting's broadcast or production may be sent to our county webmaster at webmaster@alamanz-nc.com. This address is for technical questions only. Comments and questions about the content of this meeting may be made to the Commissioners themselves. You can find their contact information at the Alamanz County website at www.alamanz-nc.com. There, you can click on the link that says County Commissioners to learn more about the Commissioners, read minutes and agendas of Commissioner meetings, and find other information about the County Commissioners. You can also send mail correspondence to County Commissioners, 124 West Elm Street, Graham, North Carolina, 27253. Again, thank you for tuning in to the Alamanz County Commissioners Meeting. Thanks for tuning in. If you're watching on YouTube, be sure to hit the subscribe button to stay up to date on all our latest video content. If you're watching on Local Gov TV, be sure to visit their website to see all of the content made for you by your local governments.